We're not going to swear him in, I think, because he is sworn in. But we are going to officially introduce him up here. Because now you will see him as of tonight, you'll see much more of him. You'll see, hopefully you'll see him at the Rotary meetings or the Colonnus or whatever we can get him to. Again, he's not going to be, our intent is not to have a patrol car running regular shifts all the time. Our intent is, and he's been so successful in the administration part of it, and we will continue on in that, and that's where, come the 9th of January, it'll be the same thing. So I want to introduce you out of January the night, your full-time Chief of Police of the City of Sunbury, Chief Miller.
I just want to say real quick, I want to thank Mayor Dave and the members of council. Obviously, the first night when I came in and was announced as a part-time administrative chief, there were some passionate people in the room that were, you know, pretty vocal about the fact that they wanted a full-time chief. And when I got here and did kind of my walking assessment, I came to the same conclusion, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done here, and Sunbury needs a full-time chief. I've been with Williamsport for almost 20 years, I'm a young guy, got my whole life ahead of me, talked it over with my family, and decided that this challenge is the one that I want to accept. I want to be here, I want to be here full-time, and I want to serve the City of Sunbury, and I want to, I really want to make a difference with this police department. I want our department to be one that not only those who serve are proud of, but those we serve are proud of. And we've run into some bumps in the road, we're making some headway, we've come a long way in a short period of time. I do believe that once I'm in there full-time and can really start getting things going, I think you're going to see some major changes, and I think you'll be pleased with what you see. But I just want to thank the members of council, they've been great. One of the reasons I want to come here is the fact that since I've been here, it's just been a very, with exception of the first night, it's been a very warm welcome to walk in the room, especially by the members of council who I work closely with, the mayor, and even some of the people, they're very appreciative of what you do. And that played a big part in my decision to leave Williamsport a year and a half early to come here full-time. I just, I like the way it feels here, I like the vibe that I get here, and I want to make a difference, so. Just want to say thank you for your vote of confidence in me, and I'll make sure that you're proud of your decision. Good job.
Oh, I believe we have a resolution in here for multi-modal transportation fund grant. Authorized official resolution results City of Sunbury and Thummerton County hereby requesting a multi-modal transportation fund grant of $1,050, $30,000 from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be used in the Chester Street reconstruction phase two.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes. Beth, I have a fee schedule with no changes made, so we're okay.
Keep our fees and stuff.
Well, remember Dave, we were going to change something, we were going to have it back visiting. Right, we're not going to do that tonight. Correct. Okay. Proven to pay invoices, vouchers, Beth?
Yes, we have $45,064.05 in general fund, and we have $3,152.06 in liquid pools. I'd like to make a motion that we pay these invoices.
Eister?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Actors' generation, Beth?
We have six people on the list for generations, three are on duplicates, are duplicates, and then we have three individuals, so I have a motion that we...
Kristing?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Tax on blighted property. Okay. Yeah, this is just, I just want to announce that we're running this through the redevelopment authority, but we're talking about looking at vacant property, tax on blighted buildings. Some of the bigger cities have it, we're going to take a look at that, we'll talk about that, we'll leave that on for January, talk about that in January. But just to announce that, we're looking into it. I also want to, I don't have it on, we don't have this on either single-family, you know, change here or...
Yeah, there's, we, for years, it's been set up, the rental, like, when the rental permits, they've had due dates, well, effective in 2018, the date's going to be changed. They're going to be April 1st, it'll be...
18 or 17?
18. First date will be, instead of July 1st, it's going to be April 1st, is when they're going to become late. And then the second date is going to be August 1st, I believe, and the third date is going to be October 31st. So November 1st will be the "duck" day, before it was December 1st, and that's when the citations are left, they're not permitted, and you might get the next year's permits mailed to you that the current year's not. We're just changing the dates on stuff that's, I mean, it's already been there, but we're just moving the dates up. And it's as much of a problem of getting the stuff in the mail and getting it out, right now, permits are being mailed out before the deadline happens, and we're getting the new permits without paying the old permits and accounts, like that. So that's what that fee is going to do, it's, the fee isn't going to change, it's going to stay the same, just the dates.
And one thing that's not on here, and that's the home program, the City of Sunbury has a home re, program that we've had for years and years and years. I wrote, in fact, I'll read you a letter that I wrote to Mr. Representative Schlegel and to Congressman Gorder. It's been brought to my attention that the City of Sunbury's single-family housing rehabilitation projects will be diminished due to DCED's recent decision to enforce Pennsylvania state wage rates. For decades, prevailing wages were not a requirement for this program, which allowed us to continue on the path of improving our neighborhoods. This ruling will force us to reevaluate our waiting list by establishing a new $25,000 limit per household and moving applicants further down our list, even though they've been on the list for years. So on behalf of the elected city officials and all city, single-family homeowners that are qualified, I urge you to repeal this decision, allow us to get the most of our tax dollars. People that aren't aware of the prevailing wages, that means that right now, without the prevailing wages, and somebody goes, Jim wants to fix up a house, and he applies and meets all his criteria, and everything comes down, he goes and hires a contractor, contractor does the business, the man, the money's paid and everything goes. Now, with prevailing wages, that contractor has to go out, and he might have to go out, instead of paying a guy $17 an hour to do drywall, the state of Pennsylvania now says he has to pay him $52 an hour. So that means a $25,000 limit, $35,000 limit we have are worthless, because you're only going to get half the amount of work done for the money that we're not going to have. So we're probably going to make it a $25,000 limit, and I still have hopes that somebody can get back to me and explain to me why somebody in our state government decided, and this is beyond, like I say, as long as we've had this, and we've had this for 30 years, I'm at, 20 anyway, and they never use prevailing wages on the $25,000 limit, I don't know why they're going to do it now, but if you, if anybody's sitting out there that's applied for that homeowner's improvement, we could have a major project coming down, a problem coming down the road, and just announcing it now, and trying to get a hold of these people to find out what's going on, but that's how prevailing wages are. If you want to get stuff done with the tax dollars, it's usually a union thing, it's usually things in Philadelphia we're about, I have no idea why they're enforcing it in the whole state of Pennsylvania, but you will drive up, you will get half the amount of work in for twice the amount of money it costs, so that's not a good thing for us, and it's wanting to know that we're, we're right in our congressmen's seat, if there's anything we can do about it. And I don't, like I say, nobody's got back to me yet to tell me why they need to change.
Okay, we have a question.
Yep.
I don't know if we have to vote on that request to change the dates, so I'll make a motion that...
The special session begins at 20:00.
We're going to send the letters out.
All right, well, then we can do it, if you want to do it. We'll do it, what is the date?
Yeah, the make, the change will be, and it'll be out, they're going out in the package this year, and it won't be affected until 2018 or something.
We're back to the rental housing, now.
This is Jeffrey.
Yes. And the motion is?
The dates will change from July 1st to April 1st, and from September 30th, or yeah, to, actually, it will be August 31st, and then September, and then the duck day will be October 31st, as far as the last year.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Kristing?
Yes. All right, we have some board appointments that are open, and we'll do that in January. What's, do you have anything that's open?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't, oh, okay. All right, so we'll do that in the January meeting. Audience comment? Thank you.
Oh, never mind, go ahead. No, go ahead. I need to go back to 17590, the central business district change that was discussed. Because I'm not, I am not, this is really, I'm not here on behalf of SRI, this is myself as a property owner and downtown business owner in Sunbury. This has, the central business district portion of the Fast Track guideline, that's specifically what that addresses, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 17590 is the Fast Track application.
Right, so the Fast Track application was designed probably about eight or nine years ago in order to try to encourage the creation of like luxury apartments in the downtown, in the hopes that the creation of these luxury apartments would revi, help to revitalize the downtown. However, as we can see, that doesn't seem to have been extremely effective. And I think that what we need to do is actually to embrace our comprehensive plan, which actually talks about allowing for higher density use of the downtown, encouraging more people to live in the downtown, and therefore embracing our walkable, bikeable community, and that those people can then spend their money in the downtown stores and create a more vital downtown. I think that that is the best way to help encourage development in our downtown, and I hope that you would consider a couple of recommendations I have, and that is that in that Fast Track guideline for the central business district, that we just strike the square footage minimum, and what that does is it then, just by striking it, it reverts to the standard UCC guidelines. So that would be my first request. The other is that we remove the parking requirements for the central business district for that parking as well. It just isn't feasible to require off-street parking in the central business district. And my last recommendation is that we reduce the new rental permit fee from $1,000 level to $135, or something equivalent, which is reasonable. Within 50-mile radius, probably the highest new rental permit rate is $135, ours is $1,000. That is just off the top of my head of the couple of things that I would recommend for that Fast Track.
Mike, parking on central district, there's no parking permits, is that correct?
Yes, there is, for hotel, hotel, and any residential use, any business use, there's not, except for employees.
Well, I would support Meg on that, about the central district, I mean, if you want to bring people in here and try to move into some luxury housing, parking or something like that, everybody's, yeah, where are you going to provide foot? I mean, that doesn't make any sense at all. That should be waived for central district area, off-street area.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, actually, I thought it was, I have to do some research.
And I'd be glad to talk with anybody about it anytime. I, this is just, I know this was probably nine months ago that we researched it, but that was what I recall off the top of my head, so. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Gil, how'd you do?
Yeah, I just have one for Beth there, what did you take out of the budget to balance it?
Well, Dave wanted to hire...
So you took out that 41?
Took out that.
Because you were like 100, almost 100,000.
Yeah, and then we were saying...
Joe, he had some inflated prices in there for like...
Legal expenses.
Legal expenses, some computer things that we decided that we weren't going to go viable one year, break the cost out over the next couple of years, there was some costs in there for economic development that we dropped down, costing there for cameras that we're going to go out and we're going to try to take some grants for, required cameras, and took out, and just listen to pick the old things down over some, but maybe nine light items that we just took off, little here, little there, that put that down, down a thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Have any questions, stop me to see the job, show which one you want.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, I'm here again.
We need your name, we just need your name for the record.
I'm trying to say it, it's Janet Bingaman, I'm here about my next-door neighbors, I got promised that I would hear something weeks ago, and I still haven't heard anything.
Jen, I know I left you a voicemail, and do you think this is something where you need to seek legal counsel, and I will help you try to find a counsel.
I already tried calling my attorney, which is the least.
Okay.
There's nothing I can do. This is why I'm coming to you guys, because you guys have the upper hand, upper hand to help the citizens of Sunbury out before something happens. This is ridiculous.
What's the issue?
It's calling my neighbors. They're disrespected, they started a fight two, three times with my, my family, they went after other people on the block, their dogs get out, go after you, we call the cops, you can't do anything, the cops want you to testify. I'm parking my vehicle six blocks away from my house, and I have off-street parking. This is not fair to me, and this is not fair to my family. Everybody on 4th Street wants peace and quiet again, and we can't get that, but yet I can guarantee you, you all up there have a nice, quiet neighborhood, and you can walk right out your back gate to your car. I don't have that privilege. I've been coming here all summer with the same issues, the same concerns, this is ridiculous.
Ma'am?
I pay my taxes too, and I hate to myself, I keep my property clean, I keep my nose, you know, to myself, I don't cause trouble, I try to obey by some various laws, while people can just act like idiots and get away with everything.
Okay, just let me say one thing. One thing is, there's no question about you have an issue with the neighbor, and there's good neighbors and there's bad neighbors, but there's nothing, when you call somebody up at 2:00 in the afternoon, when somebody calls the police department 2:00 in the afternoon and asks for a noise ordinance, we don't even have a noise ordinance, a noise ordinance doesn't go into effect a lot at night.
Very hard to tell.
How it happened.
Very hard to tell.
But I'm just saying, you keep, you bring things up, the things you're bringing up, there's no laws against them, I mean, it's, it'd be great...
There is when there's fighting.
Can't you say it's a bad neighbor?
There is when there's fighting, is there or is there not?
Is there what?
There is if there is fighting, is there or is there not?
I don't know what it takes to arrest somebody for fighting, is that two people throwing a couple of water at each other, is that fist throw, I don't know that.
I'm talking fist fighting. Why don't you come live on my street?
I'm happy, I have nice neighbors where I live.
Yeah, I know, I don't.
But the city doesn't have the authority to throw a bad neighbor.
But then, you know, Sunbury doesn't really care about their citizens, because like I said, I've gotten promised...
Theirs law is broken, the police department will affect, will affect them, and if you talk about code enforcement, I'm sure the code enforcement would be the same.
We have cited...
They're the only ones that are willing to help me, God love Mike and Joe, because they gave you guys all their, their records. You guys have all their police records right in front of you. Joe personally called me and apologized to me and realized, said, "I didn't realize it was that bad." I'm not exaggerating, but this is ridiculous. I've came to you guys for months for help, and it's like I was promised to hear something back, and I have not as of yet heard. I get told that these people are evicted. Okay, they're evicted, but yet we got a Christmas tree up. How much longer am I supposed to park my vehicles?
And that's where I would say, again, seek out your legal counsel, go back, because that is something that is a private matter, that's, it's not something the city can do anything about, but we understand your plight, and by all means, I know that Mike and Joe have been trying to help with citations, but our hands are tied, it's a private matter, you need to seek legal counsel.
They were supposed to find out if it was a rent-to-buy or if it was a rental.
We are doing what we can do as far as to clear office rules, we're citing both parties, we're citing the homeowner, supposedly the homeowner and the tenants, but, I mean, that's the issue, because we get so many of them, we'll turn it over to be turned in.
So how many do you guys have now?
I don't know how many we got, but what we go through, it's not, it's not just because, it's not just because...
So you're saying, before anything can get done, somebody's got to get seriously hurt?
No, I'm saying...
Or my vehicles get damaged. And I don't know about you, but I work hard for my, what I got.
And you said you do call the police when there's an altercation?
Yeah, whenever the police decide to show up, which is hardly, never at all, because there's only, what, two cops on a station now, in a police station?
Well, we're helping the neighbors more.
Well, meanwhile, what am I supposed to do? Continue parking my cars six months a block and keep looking at my security cameras?
Keep trying to park your cars, what does that have to do with it?
Because they're trying to do damage to my cars. I bought a brand-new car, I don't want nothing to happen with it. I don't get guaranteed safety, because like I said, I've got...
You don't get guaranteed parking space, you can park anywhere you want to park it.
Are you going to pay for my vehicle if it gets damaged?
Do you have off-street parking, is that what you're saying?
I have private parking, yes.
Oh, okay.
These people have done damage to my, these people have done damage to my vehicles before.
They urinated?
These people broke my fence, and I have to pay for it.
Jerks.
No, they don't.
They shouldn't, they only have a minimum.
Are you documenting everything?
Oh, yeah, I have security cameras, that's what's hurting me, because if I didn't have my security cameras more, action would, would come out of it, but because I have security cameras, I got to be willing to testify, every time, but these people don't realize, these people are, they're nuts, and every time you testify, they take vengeance out on you. I have a handicap daughter that I have to actually worry about, I shouldn't have to worry about that, I shouldn't have to get on my phone, get on my security cameras, and check to see where these people are. If they're out front, I go out back, if they're out back, I go out front. Really? This is ridiculous.
I will reach out to a attorney, and see if there's anything that you can suggest you can do on a private level, because really, this is, this is something that, you know, I, I probably speak for everyone in the room, we're sorry that you're voting for this ordeal, but it's a...
I'll just, or I'll get a little hair.
But it's a matter of actually, when you find a solution, and the city's not able to do that, it's a private matter.
Then you mean to tell me you guys don't know if it's still rent-to-buy?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not sure when that has to do with...
Because that's what's giving the issue, you guys were supposed to find out if it was just strictly a rental, or if it was rent-to-buy.
My understanding is a rent-to-buy.
And see, your claim would be against...
That was the question that arose on Google, I was going to say, we're citing both parties, we're citing both groups right now, we're not just citing one, we're looking to see who the accountable party was, we're, we're citing both, we're citing both, the owner and the people that are supposedly buying the cars.
But the city is trying to do what they can, but this is, again, a private matter that you probably need to go through the police department or go through...
Forget the police department, that's a joke. I'm sorry, I used to be proud of the Sunbury Police Department, it's a joke. The chief promised to set up a meeting weeks ago, haven't even gotten a phone call. I've called them, haven't gotten a call back. I'm a little agitated with our city, this city has really gone down fast, and I see why Sunbury's crime rate is rising, because nothing ever gets done, maybe that should be my new, my new job, maybe I should become a criminal, because I get away with, they get away with murder, while decent people, like decent citizens like myself, we get crap done. That's not fair.
You? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yes. Bob, Bob Worthing, the old man, that 7570 junk, what, junkyard, and for vehicles, I think you should actually go in there and get the definitions of that a little bit clarified, because under, under 75, state law, if I have a 2016 car, if it doesn't have a tag, it's not junk, and it is operable, because it can move. Operable, unoperable means it's up on blocks, it's not fit to drive, it's not abandoned because it's on private property, okay? If I had a four-wheeler, a four-wheeler, or say a G, that uses a weak gang, take up the mountain, doesn't have tags on, okay, and it's in my yard, that's going to be considered what? Or, or a dirt bike, it's not going, what is that going to be considered? Because they're not tagged.
You just wanted to get an argument, Bob.
No, it's not an argument, it's a fact.
The law is, I'm arguing.
I'm just saying, reword it.
Okay, we'll look at it.
What, what is it? What would you do in that case? What is that?
Right now, a junk vehicle, if you have a, if it's on blocks, it's sitting in the middle of your yard...
Right, that's junk.
It's a junk vehicle.
I agree with you.
If it doesn't have a registration plate update and doesn't have an inspection, it's a junk vehicle.
No, it's not.
See, that's what I'm saying, I'm not here to argue with you, Bob, I'm just telling you that's how it works.
Okay, just trying to do the research on it.
And I appreciate that, we'll double-check that.
I brought research in, and it was...
We didn't just pass that one, I'm aware this has been in effect for years.
And it's been knocked out how many times?
Never in the City of Sunbury.
Everywhere has.
I'm not aware.
And every other community around here.
Well, I'm not aware of one time in the City of Sunbury, so, but we will look at that. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Could I ask you, what will be the number of police officers in Sunbury next year?
Well, we got investigations going on, so I don't really know that.
How many police officers we'll have next year?
We're going to hire one officer for sure.
To replace who? We have, we're down, we're down to six at the moment.
Taylor came back today, we don't know if Taylor's going to be here, but he came back today, I understand he's still struggling, but he came back. We haven't heard from Blaze, we don't know if Blaze is coming back. If for some reason like Blaze wouldn't come back, then we would have money in the budget to replace him, so we can replace anybody that's there right now if, if somebody else leaves. Right now, we had lost Hawkins, so we would be replacing him with, we're done with our testing, I'm not sure who they're going to pick, I haven't seen the list yet. We have a list of two or three people that we could hire, and so we'll be hiring directly.
Yeah, but we're down to six right now, plus Taylor's back, I think it's seven.
That's what I'm saying, so if Blaze and Quinn come back, that itself, it's going to bounce around in there, but the goal, we see that up at nine or 10 again.
Is Quinn going to come back?
Well, I don't know that. We don't know. There's a couple of things going on there, so we have to wait, see how that, that's out of our hand right now.
And we lost Scott Hawes this year.
We lost Scott Hawes.
So you're, you're parking one extra police officer, and my question is, how many will we have? Are you replacing the ones that have gone as well, or is this to replace one that's gone?
That's just to replace one, the $150,000 was put in there to replace one, that's what it costs for one officer, that's what's in the budget.
So you're replacing one, so you're possibly replacing Scott Hawes.
Right, well, Hawes or Hawkins, whatever you...
And or Hawkins, so otherwise, you're going to be down and manning again compared to last year.
Yes.
So the city's got, the situation, the crime rate's going through the roof, and you guys are going to appoint one, one police officer.
We didn't go through the roof, but well, we should have pretty much our same nine officers we had last year for this year, and I don't know how it's going to play out with some of these other people, but...
With the chief, there's two full-time officers coming aboard back on right now in the year. With the new hiring coming on with the chief, that's two officers coming back on the budget.
Okay, what concerns me, all our property values are falling because of the situation of somebody with a crime levels.
See, I disagree with you there, sir, because I, I read where the property values are going up because of what we developed.
And somebody!
So it's just a, you know, a opinion, everybody's...
That's, that's news to me.
But the issue is that not everything is reported in the paper. There's a lot of word of mouth of what goes on.
Well, see, that's, that's why I call out here, so...
Totally, that's possible, but I think every community's that way. I talked to people in Sealeburg, and you want to raise the crime rate in Sealeburg, it's not being reported because Siskin Hill wants to cover it up. Same way with Roseburg and Bucknell.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Okay, nice, thank you.
Yes, sir, is there a question back here? Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for their service.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for their service. This year, it's a great holiday season, we're going to all make it a better season, hopefully. I just want to wish the board, everybody has a good time, enjoy yourself, be safe, and if you have nothing to do on New Year's Eve, we could use some help. So, about 7:00 at night, if anybody needs to come and do anything, we'll be in the middle of the streets, freezing, hopefully. It's like we're not supposed to get snow this year, so that's positively great.
That's always good.
Just going to be cold. Huh?
That's, that's always good, you can keep it above zero, that always helps too.
No snow, no snow, so, but I wish everybody a holiday season, have a good, good, safe holiday.
Thank you. Any other questions, or any comments? Yes, sir?
Kirk Provost, I was just wondering if the city's looked into legislation that's been passed by Governor Caldwell, that allows local municipalities to grant our local fire departments a tax deduction for their volunteer services?
I believe they have tax deductions now.
It was just recently passed, the last couple of months, that you can pass up to 20% for personal or property tax for our volunteers.
The fire department, that would be, yeah, the fire department would do that.
I just got a copy of that today, I haven't had time to read it.
And that's what you had to do.
But you are aware of it?
Yes, but as far as I know, it doesn't come through, through the city, it's through the state.
It's through the state. It's through the state, but our municipality has to vote on the taxes and everything